Into the Republic. One nation.
And we'll start over here to my right with roll call, Rob. David. My question, Janelle.
Present.
And Dan. Any additions or amendments to today's agenda before we entertain a motion to approve that? Motion by Dave, supported by Rob, that we approve today's agenda. All in favor? Opposed? The same? Motion carried. Looking for an approval for our March first meeting minutes?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the March meeting minutes.
Motion by Janelle, supported by Danny, that we approved the March first twenty twenty-three minutes. All in favor? Opposed? The same? Motion carried. All right, we're gonna have two public comment periods during this public hearing. First public comment. Portion that we're gonna open up now is just any sort of comments on our agenda items. After Spicer does go through their report for the solar farm, we will then open up for other public comments at that time. So do we have any public comments for any of the agenda items? All right. The next item is a PA one sixteen application for Mark Burgie. This is parcel number one, one dash zero, two, two dash zero, two, six, zero, zero. This is an eighteen acre parcel that is in North Star Township, looking to move that into a PA one sixteen. We have our full packet here. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? On that before we entertain a motion? Okay. Motion by Danny, supported by Janelle, that we accept the PA one sixteen application for Mark Burgie. Parcel number one, one, zero, two, two, zero, two, six, zero, zero. All in favor? Opposed? The same? Motion carried. Next item we have is a, it's just set to us by Clinton County, just for our consideration. That was also included in your packet. This is a moratorium to place a one-year freeze on the issuance of permits, licenses, approvals for any construction of wind energy conversion systems, mat towers, or solar energy facilities. So Clinton County has sent this to us for review. We can send this back. We can approve it. We can deny it. We can approve it with conditions. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Or let's have a little discussion? We did something similar, or something similar was sent to us by a township here in Grashit County at the end of last year. So basically, they're just wanting a freeze, maybe to kind of look over their current ordinance, kind of go through with a fine-tooth comb before they would like to do that. So.
Yes, I approve. Send our approval. Were there?
Do we have a second on that? Or a different motion? All right, motion by Dave, supported by Danny, that we approve their moratorium for one year. All in favor? Opposed? The same? Motion carried. All right, next on the agenda, we'll open it up to Spicer and Kyle. Cindy and Kyle, I'm sorry, Cindy from Spicer and Kyle from Fagies. We're gonna go over our special use application.
Yes, and I'll start. So again, I'm Kyle O'Meara. I'm an attorney at Bay Schultz, Brucek Roads. The first item we have on your agenda related to this proposed solar farm is conflicts of interest, your bylaws, state law, and case law discusses what would constitute a conflict of interest. And if you did have a conflict of interest, you would not be able to deliberate or vote on the proposed application before you. I have sent emails to all of you. I've called and talked with some of you, and I have not heard any conflicts of interest represented to me. So in that, with that being said, be my opinion that everybody can participate unless they believe they may have a conflict of interest. And they have a conflict of interest, they can feel free to disclose that right now, or we can evaluate whether one exists. But other than that, I have not heard any conflicts of interest from any member of the planning commission.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Would you like to give us an overview of the process?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, so with us today, this, I'm Cindy with Spicer Group. Jenny and Jessica are with me as well. And today, what we're gonna do is we're going to review an application that was made for your solar project from DTE. And DT is gonna do a little presentation first, kind of talk about the project. And then after that, the planning commission has a report that we put together after the application. There's two submittals that were made, and we put a report together. And so what we'll do is we'll walk through that for the special use, and then also the site plan. We have a PowerPoint that summarizes this presentation, and so we won't read every page to you, though I know that's maybe what you were hoping we didn't do, so we will not. There'll just be a PowerPoint. And then, and then after that, we'll open it up for public comment, and then we'll go from there.
Right. Wonderful. Thank you.
So the next would be the, you can open your meeting, sorry.
No. So we will open up the public hearing at five, ten PM. And we'll start with our Teresa. Do you want to give us a little overview of your project here? Yes, please.
Chair, do you want me to bring the microphone to?
If you could, that would be just for people. We have many people.
I don't have a printed copy, so. So first of all, I want to take a minute to introduce myself and the individuals that are here on behalf of DTE. You may remember me. I came to a meeting at the end of last year, much more casual setting, and let you know that DTE was working on an application that we were going to be submitting. And obviously, that application is for North Star Township, but because North Star is county-owned, we're here for you this evening. There are a number of DTE reps that are here, and that is in case there are questions that I am not able to answer. So I, I'm not gonna go through their, their experience or their background, but if a question does come up and they do answer that question before they answer it, they'll be able to give you a little bit of background about themselves as to why they're, why they're able to speak to the information. So we do have, but I will let you know who they are, just so you can be aware. So we have James Mann with us, and James would be able to speak to any questions that might be relating to the design and layout. We have Axel Olson. He's our subject matter expert in all things glare-related. So if there's any questions or concerns about glare, he'll be able to speak to some of those. Ryan, and I'm not going to attempt to say his last name, he'll be able to answer any sound-related concerns or questions that might come about. And, and then we also have Dan Ettinger. Dan is DTE's outside legal counsel, and he can speak to some of the, speak to the information that's in the application itself. And then Matt Wagner is the manager of the Renewable Energy Department at DTE. So anything DTE-related or things that none of us can answer, hopefully he'll be able to be the guy that can answer. So in an effort to keep moving and let Spicer walk through their report, I kind of just wanted to walk through a few slides that we have here, some generic solar-related comments, and then some more specific, a couple of slides on specifically the projects that we're referring to. So, so solar benefits, I cannot read that, so I'm gonna read my notes in front of me. So basically, just wanted to touch on the solar benefits. Solar power generation produces no air emissions compared to traditional forms of power, no nitrogen oxide, sulfur, carbon dioxides. Communities that host renewable energy projects receive the local tax revenue for police, schools, roads, and other vital community services. Our solar energy projects bring up to about two hundred jobs during construction, and contractors invest locally for materials and labors continuously throughout that timeframe. And then more broadly, DTE's investment in renewable energy has created or sustained a total of four thousand jobs in Michigan since two thousand and nine. When we go into evaluation phase and why we chose North Star Township as part of this project, first of all, we look to identify the area that we would like to consider. And there's a typo. We started working in North Star Township in June of two thousand and twenty. And one of the first things we have to do is determine if there is an interest from landowners. Obviously, we don't have interest from landowners. We can't move forward with that. Once we identify that we do have interest, then DTE and a myriad of people, they collect the data to better characterize. Basically, what we do is we need to make sure that we can characterize the site and understand potential constraints. Those, those studies that we do are threatened endangered species, cultural resource studies, geology and soil testing, wetlands, waterways, flood zones, land use. I could go on and on. It's, we didn't submit our application until December of twenty, the end of December, beginning of January, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. And in that timeframe was when we spent all this time doing these studies. So it's an extensive process. One of the things that we look at in terms of designing, that I think it's important for this group to know, is a DTE's best practices. So North Star Township, governed by Grashit County, has setbacks and has ordinance requirements. And we try to make sure that we're being a good neighbor in these communities. We, we looked at your setbacks for Grashit County, and we tried to design something that actually allowed for further setbacks wherever possible. So in most cases, if not all, we are over a hundred feet from the center of the road right away instead of fifty feet. And the big thing that we like to do is try to stay further away from non-participant dwellings. So in that, most of, if not all of our homes, there might be a couple that are off just slightly, but we try to stay three hundred feet away. And the reason we do that is most people can envision what a football field is. Most people have been to a, you know, to a football game. When people start talking setbacks, it's really hard when somebody's saying, well, why not do two hundred? Why not do five hundred? It's really hard to envision what that actually is in a real-life setting. So three hundred foot was the kind of the number that we worked off of, and that has seemed to, even with non-participants that I meet with in their living rooms that know that this project is moving forward, that's something that they appreciate that we try to do for them, so that we're not right, real super close to their home. So that being said, we, I mentioned, we submitted our application. I would say it was the end of December, but with holidays, you guys probably didn't even get access to it until January timeframe. Something that I wasn't planning on mentioning until last night, when we figured this out, was when we submit our application and the supporting materials, we submit based on the most up-to-date information at that time. Several months have gone by. We've had the ability to work with the drain and the roads and everybody else that's involved, and landowners, and trying to identify where things are going to be placed as we move forward. So sometimes there are minor changes or updates to the project design that occur even after submission of the application, which can require an update to the site plans prior to construction. We did determine that there was a change, and we just realized that we didn't have it correct. Now, we thought it was correct, and it's not, and that is the lay-down yard. The lay-down yard was originally cited to be done in Washington Township, which is a portion of the project. It made more sense after further evaluation from where it was, where we were looking at placing it, to move it across the street. So if you can think about it from that perspective, we're just thinking moving it across the street. Well, what that in fact did was move it to another township. We didn't realize that this was in there. I didn't realize. I noticed this last night when I was going through materials, and it obviously was a red flag. I got on the phone with people at nine thirty last night and said, we referenced, we're gonna have a lay-down yard in Washington Township, and we're really, it's, we're looking at North Star Township for a couple of reasons. It's not near any non-participants, whereas our other lay-down yard was gonna be right near a non-participant. And the other thing that I did recognize was that it's still within the same footprint of the actual solar project. So from a noticing perspective, it wouldn't have changed anything, any notices that went out to homes for the three hundred foot, three hundred foot list. So that being said, we believe that, we believe or we hope that the PC can approve our sub and site plans tonight, and ensure that there are conditions that require DTE to update the site plans, including the provision of information regarding the lay-down yard prior to, prior to construction. So I just wanted to be very transparent. We reached out to, our legal counsel reached out to Kyle this morning to make him aware of this. It was unfortunate that we just realized this yesterday and didn't give you guys more notice on this. So our apologies for that. So that was the portion that was not in my original notes. So I wanted to just throw that out there, and now we can, we could keep going. So that being said, the next thing that I wanted to touch on is the the map. So we, if, one of the things that's important, and I know that most people are interested in, is where's this, where's this gonna be located? We were able to secure land right near, pretty close to the substation, and I think that's important to make sure that you are aware. In the evaluation phase, one of the reasons that we actually looked in this township is because DTE owns the wind project that's here. And there is, in layman's terms, there's leftover capacity on that substation. So our project doesn't require putting in a new substation. We're just going to maximize the substation that's currently in existence. And so when we were meeting with landowners for this project, it was centered around where that substation was located. So the next slide will just kind of show, and I know that Spicer has a lot more slides like this, but that area right there is Grant Road is the road just south of the black blocks that you see there. So the, the overall project itself has, we have about eight parcels with solar panels, approximately two hundred and thirty acres. That equates to forty-five megawatts, enough to power seventy-four hundred homes. And then each panel, for those that aren't aware, each panel is roughly three feet, eight inches by seven feet, six inches, which is smaller than a sheet of plywood. So the land, and one of the other benefits that some of the individuals that are participating are excited about is the land can be returned to agricultural use at the end of the operational life. And I just jumped around a little bit. So any, and you can stop and ask questions, I guess, if you want, but we'll go to the next slide then. The last thing, a couple of other things I wanted to touch on is the construction phase. So since we've gone through the evaluation phase, and we've decided, we've figured out that we could make a project work here, just wanted to touch a little bit on the construction phase. DT delivers construction materials and time-sequence banners, and manner, materials are delivered to include support, structure, wiring, solar modules, and related components. As you can see, there's some photos here that just help you understand that the solar panels themselves are going to be brought here on a flatbed truck. A little bit different than some of what you might have seen before when you've seen the wind projects come through here. It's, there's definitely not the same type of impact coming into the community from a construction standpoint. And then after construction is finalized, we do the, we walk through the testing. I think what's important to note here is the photos. With the pictures that you see here, it just demonstrates sort of the height of the solar panels. And as you can see, the individuals working on them are standing just below it. So that's roughly around six feet in the air. And then the photo to the right shows the visual impact of the panels, a little bit of a tilt with the individual standing next to them. So it just gives you a visual for the height of the solar panels when they're fully upright. Our panels will be tracking with the sun. So during the day, middle of the day, when the sun's high in the sky, those panels will be flat. And the other thing that people like to know, and I found that there are really beneficial to individuals to know, is that any noise that comes from the inverters from a solar panel, that it doesn't run at night, because it only runs when the sun is shining. So there is zero noise in the evenings for, from the solar panels themselves. So. And then I already walked through the different components of what we're looking at for North Star specifically. Any questions, comments?
All right. Well, thank you, guys. So as Jenny puts up our, our PowerPoint, as you know, so it's our job to review the application per our, per year's ordinance. And just so you know, we received two submittals. One applicant, one submittal was December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and then we see the supplemental, submittal on April seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. So there's your two different submittals that we were looking at as we did this evaluation, just so you had an idea. There we go. So that's what, that's, that's our, that's what we're looking at. Just our next steps, we talked about it just a little bit already, but I'll just do it again. So we're gonna review our planning, our report, then you guys will open it up for the public hearing. And at that time, the, the public can address the planning commission, and they can speak and state their, their names and address for the record to facilitate orderly and productive discussion. We asked everybody, we gave them three minutes, and so what you guys, what we'll do is we'll have a little timer up there. So when public comment comes, we'll have a little time for public comment. Please be, we just ask our public to be, please very respectful of the speakers and the planning commission, and only speak during your public period. And then we'll write down all the questions. And if there's any questions that need to get answered after we'll turn back to planning commission, and if you guys would like those to be answered, that's, would be up to you to make those decisions. And then after that, it'll be the deliberation for both, we're looking at both the special use permit and the site plan review for the application. Just a little bit about us, Spicer, and what our role is. Our roles are working for Grashit County. We are here to help facilitate any clarification as we go through the process. And then just to make sure, our main goal is to make sure that the applicant follows all of the rules and everything that's in our ordinance, and just make sure that everything is followed correctly. A purpose of our meeting this evening is for the special land use. Tonight's public hearing is considering both the uses relevant to the special land use application, site plan review. A special land use is a use that would be harmonious with the overall zoning of an area, but requires additional review and consideration by the planning commission. The additional review includes a public hearing to determine if the proposed use is appropriate. The solar farmland use is allowed under your chapter fourteen and chapter fourteen point four of the Grashit County ordinance. Per the, or, per the Enabling Act, decisions on a special land use are to be incorporated in a statement of findings and a conclusion relative to the special land use with, which specifies the basis of the decision and any, any conditions that might be imposed, basically a resolution of some type. All right, we saw this a little bit from Teresa's presentation, but this is just to give us a location within North Star Township where this, where the solar farm is, is proposed. This gives you a little bit of a location, and the light blue is down there at the bottom, so it's the southern portion of the township. And again, this just shows the, the project overview. We are in sections thirty-four to thirty-six. And if you guys can see my little, no, that doesn't work. Okay, so in sections thirty-four to thirty-six, there are everything that's in blue would be where the, where the panels are, are to be proposed. In addition, just so you can see, if you can see the blue circles, oh, there, you can see that. So those little circles right there are the existing turbines that are on site. So these are intermixed amongst the turbines, and we can kind of see that. There we go. So that's a turbine there, and that's a turbine there, and that's a turbine over there. Just to give you an idea, it's mixed within those. Special land use requirement. So this is just gonna, we're gonna talk briefly about the ordinance and how the application applies to, to your ordinance requirements. So in our ordinance, chapter sixteen, the special land use approvals and standards. So the planning commission shall review the particular circumstances of the application under consideration in terms of the following standards, and shall approve a special land use only upon only find, excuse me, only upon findings of compliance with each of the following standards, as well as applicable standards established elsewhere in the ordinance. The special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of adjacent property and the surrounding area. The special land use shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. The special land use shall be, shall not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials, or equipment that would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of persons or properties through the creation of hazardous or potentially hazardous situations or excessive or excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, dust, fumes or glare. And last, special land use shall not place demands on public services or facilities in excess of currently, that's currently capable. So now we're just gonna look at chapter sixteen point seven-two specifically for our special land use for our solar farm. And the first couple of slides are really, as we went through the application, I'm gonna go through this quickly. It just, things that there's really, that we saw in the application, that there's really not gonna be no additional action required or no additional condition that we would recommend. Um, everything seemed to be complete per our review of all the applications. The districts, the districts of facilities are proposed in agriculture, agricultural and industrial zoning districts, which are per our ordinance. Uh, the construction timeline applicant has stated construction will be, will commence four months post approval and be completed within twenty months. Uh, the graphical demonstration, which our next slide will show you, the applicant provided demonstrations of the existing conditions and post-construction construction, excuse me, five to ten years out, so you kind of have an idea what this will look like down the line. Uh, security, the proposed security measures is a eight-foot lock, uh, lockable chain link perimeter fence. Now, if we go to the next slide, this is just to show you graphically, we get to kind of see that. So to our left is our existing field and to our right, if you see in the back, the, the tall kind of in the tall there, I'm not sure that this really shown it very well, but there we go, if you can see that in the back, those are the panels. And then this is a first year, this is actually when the plant material is established and planted, so that's just when it's installed. And then the next one is to show, whoa, hang on, there we go, wait, wait, wait for it, okay. Down, okay. More exciting. Um, so then the next slide to the left is what the proposed after five years of growth, what that would look like. So the idea is to show you, those are your panels, you still see a little bit of the gray back there, but that's five years with that growth would look like. And then to our right, ten years of growth from planting with the idea that the, uh, the proposed would be that would end up screening, you know, as, as it went on. And we'll talk more about vegetation and screening and the life of vegetation as we go through the, the review. But that's just in general, per your ordinance, what the request was, oops, this one. So in addition to uh, no act, additional actions required or information, on the end that the information was complete, the potential hazard, the applicant states that there's no unreasonable safety hazards uh, to the property or wildlife. All components comply with laws, regulations and standards, and the applicant provided emergency response procedures as well. Um, electromagnetic interference, the applicant states that the PV models will not emit interference. And then the maximum lot cover is the solar farms are exempt um, for ordinance uh, from maximum lot coverage requirements. Additional no actions required, the vegetation maintenance, applicant states that the vegetation will be maintained to less, and this is around, these are around the panels, once the panels are installed. Uh, the main, maintained uh, less than eighteen inches under the solar panels and then ten foot around each of the panels. And then the hours of operations and, and the applicant just spoke to that, the applicant has said the solar farm will not operate in the evening. So now we start getting into, after our review, some additional information that we need to be looking for and additional conditions that we would recommend that the commission take into consideration. So the first one, the project applicant needs to submit final drawings and specifications for the models of the panels and all other infrastructures. We're just asking that you have on file, you know exactly what the models are and all that kind of stuff. You need all that detailed information, that was not in the application, but that's just a request that, that you would need to have that on hand. Access roads applicant needs to provide a copy of approved permits, a copy of transportation plan and a maintenance plan for all the access drives. That's just, is was needed for the life of the project, everything that we're talking about is for the life of the project. Environmental analysis, the applicant will shall obtain and provide the following permits from Eagle and the Granger County Drain Commissioner and provide the um, unanticipated discoveries plan as well. So those are all things that we look for, we do not have at the application, but we would look for prior to um, commencing construction. Manufacturers installation, applicant shall provide a copy of the manufacturer's installation instructions. Um, and then they'll also provide the construction drawings from a certified registered uh, engineer in the state of Michigan. Complete resolution, um, this is similar to the complete life resolution that we had for the turbines. Applicant would need to then to provide an app, uh, complaint resolution process with their application. Uh, the final version shall include the following items, allow residents to submit complaints, contains a phone number where a resident, a representative can be reached, uh, does not preclude the county from acting on an, a complaint and allows the applicant to resolve and report the resolution of the complaint. Uh, we, you just need detailed information on that. Decommissioning. Decommissioned, the applicant should clarify the life of the project, I need to clarify the life of the project. Uh, does a current estimate include a restoration of the permanent basins? Um, so what happens during these projects is, you know, they try and put it on the words flap, but there's grading and things that have to happen. So there will be basins, um, storage and things like that that'll happen onsite. We just want to make sure that when we talk about the site being put back to the nature that it is, the existing field that it is, all of that has to be restored and that by the applicant. Uh, the current decommissioning value includes salvage. At a minimum, uh, the agreed upon financial instrument uh, shall be at least equal to the overall decommissioning cost. Um, and this is similar to the conversation we had when it came to the turbines, uh, not to include any salvage values because salvage values are, who knows what they are, you know, whenever that would happen. So um, we just want to make sure it's reasonably compared to recent values at the time. Uh, the agreement shall include a clause to update the amount of, the amount to address decommissioning cost increase, increases uh, throughout the life of the project. And that's just a table at the bottom there that was in the application that talks about the decommissioning expenses, the potential revenue for salvage and then the uh, net decommissioning cost. This is probably more just for your information. Additionally, uh, for your conditions to also continue, uh, would be the applicant shall submit a final detailed drawings of the panels and all components they intend to install. The site plan uh, will be reviewed during the site plan review requirements for the presentation, so that's gonna be in a little bit here. The uh, security fencing, the applicant shall clarify their proposed perimeter fence materials. Zone ordinance requires a chain link fence for the perimeter. Um, it's a proposal for an eight-foot perimeter fence, applicant includes two fencing types, wood posts, galvanized mesh wire and a chain link fence. We just need the applicant to uh, to identify which one's gonna be used and the applicant shall provide a uh, a signage detail of the project, of signage, yeah, a signage detail for the project. Noise, the applicant shall provide a noise study that shows the project is at or below required noise levels for the ordinance. As a condition of approval, the applicant will need to provide a post-construction noise study showing compliance. Meaning that once it's installed, we're recommending that a post-study be done. Um, because there's, there's a study that was done with the application, but the, a post-study would, would also assist. So this is just a plan that was also in the application and that just shows uh, noisy. It just shows the um, shows we have a little humor. Uh, but that just, what, what it shows are those two pink dots. You know, as with the turbines, we call them residents, but those are homes and the, and those are two different home addresses. One is fifty-three, thirty-five, thirty Hayes Road is five oh three and the other, other is thirty-three, six oh seven East Hayes Road. And the point of that is, is that, that the solar, the noise from the solar, as well as combined with the noise from the wind, would take the decibels right now with the sound study to fifty-three decibels. For wind is fifty-five, for solar, your, your requirement is fifty decibels, and so it would be higher. So it's, it's, it's just, we're just looking for this to be determined. Once it's installed, you need, just so you're aware of it, so the studies are done, and then if it needs to be um, managed or mitigated, we would need to mitigate that and have that conversation. But just really just to make you aware of the, of just the, the noise levels that are in the sound, sound study as we speak right now. And just as, as another point, I mean, as we go through this, and if I have questions or stuff, I mean, I can, we can call on, on the applicant and they can come and answer questions if it, if it helps you as we go through this. The next is glare. Um, the zoning ordinance states that the concentrated solar glare shall not be directed towards uh, toward or onto nearby properties or roadways at any time of day. The applicant has provided a glare study that shows glare of thirteen homes and two roadways without considering the vegetation, the topography or any existing visual screen such as a fencing. So the planning commission would need to decide the appropriate level to that of response. Either provide wide condition, uh, project-wide condition would be a thought, requiring some type of mitigation or curtailment. Using the project uh, uh, complaint resolution plan, um, if there are issues with the glare. Uh, what we would actually recommend is that a, a project-wide condition addressing glare and post-construction requirements for a study on, on modeling. You know, vegetation is, is a way to, to control glare. Screening and fencing is a way to control glare. Vegetation can, can die off and um, some people have homes that are higher than one story. So glare can be higher than the vegetation and higher than a fence. And so those are just all things that post-studies would help you take into consideration. These panels are set up that they're, they can all tilt individually. So if a post-study was done and there was glare that was happening, these panels could be the curtailed, you know, in a way so that there wouldn't be glare on individual uh, homes. But that's just something to be determined and just something for the planning commission, go ahead. Do you guys want to talk to the?
Yeah, so. The question, was the question, how do the solar panels track the sun?
Yeah, if there's. You're set to move with it on or not set, uh, set angle, is that what?
Correct, or in the morning. They, they're facing east, sunrise is and they just follow the sun. Once they, once the sun sets, the panels reset.
Okay.
And that's, and then that's how it works.
Okay.
Generally.
So there's always the complaint resolution, so you're always gonna have that complaint resolution opportunity, you know, so that, so people can always put a complaint resolution once it's installed. I think it's just, we're, we're proposing is that the uh, a post-construction study would kind of help out of the box, you know, how things are, how things are working. Um, this is just, these are just images of homes that per the study would be anticipated to have some type of glare on them. And this is in section twenty-seven, thirty-four, and the little light blue at the bottom just shows the location of the panels. And that's just us kind of putting a ghost in area on it, but that's just to show you, um, all the purple would be ones that could possibly be affected by the, uh, by the glare. And then again, excuse me, in section twenty-six and tw- and twenty-six and thirty-five, uh, all the ones along Hayes Road, Hayes Road could be impacted and then also along uh, the west. So that's, those are just things to consider, just, you know, as we go through, we talk about conditions and things like that. Landscaping screening and buffering plan, the applicant uh, needs to self-finalize a landscaping plan clarifying the following questions. Um, how was the use of each landscape buffer option, a twenty-foot and a thirty-foot vegetated buffer determined throughout the project? We're just wondering how, how that was determined, one to use a twenty-foot and one to use a thirty-foot buffer. Uh, which options or which option or options will be constructed? The, uh, the site plan shows that, and it, we're gonna show you the next one, show that there's no buffering on the right-hand side of block eight and block ten, and we can, we can talk to the applicant real quick and ask them on that one. Uh, and the applicant shall maintain a vegetative buffer for the life of the project and be responsible for replacing any unhealthy vegetation. And that, that can be like with the life cycle of, you know, vegetation dies and it needs to be planted during the right time of year. Um, but once again, that would be part of the um, uh, condition. So this is the one that's on the site plan that I, I would just, if it's all right with you, if I could ask um, the applicant, this particular did not show any buffering at all. And uh, it was just, it was just a question why that was missing any uh, buffering plan.
We, we can address that, I sent an email um, last night on this. The, the, the reason is where there's existing landscaping, um, that thought was added with this buffering. I mean, substantiate that through, through pictures, um, we did not include additional landscaping in our site. Uh, so, so, you know, that essentially that if you might stay there and substitute for that, it's actually much more the short of a row. Uh, so we didn't show pictures. Um, actually, Michael was the other question, then you had thirty as well, the thirty versus twenty-foot buffer. Um, and even though it's not really requiring in the ordinance, um, when we did this in Pine River as well, um, so the twenty-foot buffer is only to use generally along, along the perimeter of the project. Uh, there was not existing vegetation that, that is adequate. But what we also want to do is provide an added layer for the opposite, uh, not just saving residences. So we can try to do a little bit more of a robust, um, uh, uh, landscaping buffer in those areas, and so you'll see uh, sort of two, when you look at the landscaping and really put on the site plans, sort of two, stick them on, and that's why we're like there.
Okay. All right, so then, um, other, 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 other conditions that we would recommend, uh, codes, the applicant shall provide copies of all the necessary permits um, and comply with all local, state, national, construction and electrical codes. Expiration, the uh, land use, special land use permit shall expire if the construction of the solar farm has not commenced in twenty-four months of the state of the, from the date of the, it's issued issuance. Uh, inspection, the township pertains to right to inspect the premise at any reasonable time. So now, so that's, those are all of our special use required, that was it, after our review for your ordinance. And then that was our conditions that we would recommend. So then that should be then our site plan review. And so reference to the site plan review for chapter fourteen point four. Uh, these are just again, the same idea setup, no actions of the applicant for information that was already completed. Um, to the districts, the project is located in the agricultural and industrial zoning districts as allowed. Site plan, the applicant provided updated site plans from the four fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Uh, participation documentation applicant has provided a list of the participating parcels, written authorization from landowners and a sample of easement agreements. Askro, applicant has provided escrow uh, for the review uh, of the application. Conditions that we would recommend for the site plan, insurance policy, applicant has provided an insurance certificate from eight twenty-four through eight twenty-two seven, once that expires, there will need to be provided an updated documentation to the county. Site plans, so this is up to the planning commission, and the planning commission would like additional site plan documentation outlined um, in this particular section, they could request it as a condition of the approval. So just your, where your ordinance reads with your, all your specific site plan requirements, they hit some of them, they didn't hit all of them. And it just, we just leave it to the discretion of, because of the size of the project and the type of the project, um, it was, it's really just up to the planning commission, if you guys want everything addressed, it's within your ordinance on each of those items or with the submission, and we can, we can walk you through that, but that's just something to consider. It seemed for us, it was enough for us to get through it and understand, you know, had enough of the requirements on it. But that would just, we want to make sure, let you know that all, everything that per our ordinance for site plan was not on the plan sets. And so now this then goes back, and so this is our special use just for site plan. So that the site plan, the applicant has provided updated site plans as for four fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and the project includes nineteen blocks of panels in sections twenty-three to thirty-six. The ordinance requires fifty-foot setback uh, from the right-of-way and a twenty-five-foot setback from the adjacent property lines. Uh, applicant, as they discussed earlier when they presented, Theresa presented, uh, applicant designed the proper project with the following setbacks, from the fence line, a hundred-foot property lines and the center line of the road right-of-way, thirty-foot from non-participating residences. Three hundred, sorry, three hundred, what is it? Thirty, thirty, three hundred. Three hundred from non-participating residences. Uh, the proposal meets the county setback requirements and, and they went above and beyond on that. The applicant is also proposing upgrades at the substation. Uh, these are additional. Uh, these are additional electrical components. As they talked about, they're using that existing substation that's already on site. So, but what's additional is there are additional electrical components. Um, but those electrical components will not change the footprint of that existing substation. So wait till today, it won't really change the way that looks. Uh, the expansion is covered on the, under the essential services clause in the ordinance. Um, the only other thing that we're asking is that they are planning two new light posts on site. And if the planning commission would like additional information, um, we just would recommend that, that we request those from the applicant. The two additional light posts, only because it might impact our surrounding residents. All right, so now that was your site plan review. We did your special use review. So now after we looked at it, we come up with some other ideas and some thoughts for some additional conditions that we'd like you to consider. As you look at this project. Um, it's always good to have asphalt of your final project. Um, and so a condition would be a recommendation to have asphalt, uh, to provide post-construction certifications. Uh, that the project complies with codes and industrial practices and asphalt drawings for all proposed facilities and project components. Um, project movement, if there's any minor changes that can be viewed by the zoning administrator or your planning consultant. It's, those changes can be, uh, minor change, those are minor changes. But if they're not, then they have determined that they are larger changes, they would need to then be reviewed again by the planning commission. Transfer, any approval granted to the applicant is transferable to a successor or an assi- or assigned by the applicant. With the transfer notice and understanding that all conditions, restrictions, requirements and obligations approved shall apply. Additional conditions, um, access road and collection lines. Um, alterations of access roads and underground collection systems are allowed with the landlord's permission. As long as all permits from the road commission, drain commission and eagle are obtained. All required, all requirements are still met and all local, state and federal approvals are also met. In addition, your drain agreement, the applicant shall enter into an agreement with the drain commissioner and post any financial obligation. Addition, the road agreement, the applicant shall enter into an agreement with the road commissioner and post any financial obligation. Continuing ordinance enforcement escrow. Applicants shall, uh, deposit funds in escrow account as determined by the county. For ensuring that the applicant owner of the project meets all requirements imposed by the zoning ordinance and any relevant project zoning approvals. The applicant owner shall maintain such escrows for the life of the project. Repowering. If the applicant chooses to repower, the owner applicant must apply for and receive a new special use permit. And site plan approval for the, from the county. So this is if they're going to go and they're going to start changing major elements out there. Needs to come in front of the planning commission and the planning commission needs to see it again as a special use permit. Especially use process. Blair, if requested from the county, applicant shall conduct a post-construction glare analysis. And there you go. Do that, quick and easy. That was it pretty quickly. Um, this just takes us back to our agenda. So at this point, if the planning commission, you guys have any other questions for us, we can talk to you whenever you like. Um, if, if you do, we can talk about it now. If not, we can move to your public, uh, your public comment. Which, again, is the public comment, we can put the three minutes up there for everybody. This is a time for the public to address the planning commission. Uh, speakers will need to state their name and address for the record. And again, once again, to facilitate orderly and productive discussion and to give everyone an opportunity to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, during each period, please be respectful of the speakers and the planning commission and only speak during your comment period. Again, we'll write down your questions and after everyone has spoken. Uh, if the planning station would like, we'll, we can address the questions, it's up to you, the planning commission, how you'd like us to handle it, so. So there you go. Right back to you, Chair.
We have the public comment.
Oh.
So when does my clock start now? I'm Craig Hooper, four two four zero South State Road. Actually, more questions than comments. First, is this going to fill up that Crete Road substation? So that the guys that keep trying to rent my land for solar aren't going to have a place to put it? Uh, that's just general interest. Second, I was surprised to read in the paper that you're doing a stormwater study. And I'm thinking, you're just driving piles into the ground to support these panels, how's that going to impact stormwater? Any landowner concerns? Um. Let's see. Next, so we know there's a problem with glare. Has DTE considered buying out all those non, um. Let's see, non-participating homeowners? Cause nobody's ever going to buy their house if you put all those solar panels in. They may be happy, they may love it there, but, you know, once you build those panels. The next generation is out of luck. You talked about only, okay, the solar farm does not operate at night, we understand that. But operation as in sun's not a hand, but if you need to do repairs, is D E T going to do repairs at night? I think they would, um. Let me, uh. That's about it. So more questions than anything else. I'm fine with solar panels, I find them less intrusive than wind turbines. But I'm glad my house is not going to be surrounded by them. Thank you.
Hi there, Jennifer Upshaw, it's fifty-four seventy-five South Crete. So I have more questions than anything, but my house is the only house in that five thousand block that's on the same side as the solar panels. So the glare is going to come at my house. There's no if and ands and buts the way it does. But then also I want to know who's going to take care of the rest of the land. So we have that, they're going to take care of thirty foot, but then we have that other land there. That is usually farmed, so as well taken care of. But now it can't be farmed, so we're going to have all that overgrowth, which means more mosquitoes, more bugs. So I was more concerned about that. Aspect of it. But some are the only concerns I have.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Evan Allardyce, seventy-three oh three, Brashett Road, um, in Saginaw, Michigan. Um, I'm the business manager for IBW Local five five seven in Saginaw. And I represent two hundred members from Grashaw County, Saginaw County and Tuscola County. So I wanted to speak to the jobs app, aspect, point of this whole project here. Um, the big point that I always like to make at these meetings is local jobs for local people. This will provide local jobs for local people. Um, and it's not just about, uh, those people getting jobs, we're having the great benefits that can be provided by going to work. For a contractor through DTE on one of these projects to top-notch benefits. Um, not to mention the infusion that will come into the community during, before and after the construction of this project. You know, the gas stations, the restaurants, um, the, the tax dollars that will be infused in the area. Just a, a great boost to the area for sure. Some of my workforce has been working on the road recently and it'll bring some of them back home to work on a project in their local community as well. Get those people sleeping in their own beds and building something in their community instead of maybe down in Detroit. Nothing against the Detroit's, but, you know, I'm a local guy and I want to build up the local area around here. Um. The new employees as well. The trades are hot right now, the, the building trades are going to be bursting at the seams here very shortly. And it's a great way for kids to get an introduction into the electrical trade. For sure. I'll take you back in time about two years ago, we did a project with J-Rank Electric on a couple of different, uh, solar farms in Saginaw County. And we had about a dozen people go out on like an introductory position to an apprenticeship program. And out of those twelve people, five of them landed in our apprenticeship program and they are thriving. Right now, and they will continue to thrive and those job opportunities never would have happened if they hadn't broken in on a solar farm. So those points can't be denied and they need not be missed either. My locals worked with DTE and J-Rank Electric on several different projects, it's a great relationship that we have with them. They do everything top-notch, they do everything as best they can to their ability. There are no better entities that you can deal with doing this, uh, sort of a project here. So my main goal was to just be here and speak on behalf of the workforce that would be going to work on that project. Um, and on behalf of my members, thank you for your time and I do encourage everybody to go ahead with this, uh, project and let's get people to work. Thank you.
Uh, William Holshue, five five nine eight, South Crete. Just have two very quick and easy questions. Uh, the proposed life of the project, um, just curious about a number there. And, uh, the three hundred foot from, uh, non-participating properties, is that from the property line or from existing structures? That's all.
Uh, Ron Cuthbert, eighteen fifty-three East Stumpford Road, Lethicah. Uh, we're not right by the project, uh, one question I have. Once, uh, they get done with this, are there going to be other ones coming to other areas? And if someone has signed up to be in PA one sixteen, uh, shouldn't that be honored? And, uh. Uh, Grashaw County has always been known as a good farming area, why do we want to destroy it? No, I guess that's all I got to say.
So. One's just a comment, you know, we heard the public relations, you're going to buy materials in the area. So I've made that for the company, I, argument for the company I work for. Do you really think you're going to buy steel cable and the panels in Grashaw County? I mean, you might get some cable fittings and of course, the electrical workers, as the union, uh, leader pointed out, that'll be good, but. Come on. Um, second thing is you talked about revenue. So how does the North Star Township and Grashaw County get revenue from this project? Is it just like wind towers? I'm told it's something different, that you can't tax them as property the way you can wind towers. So I'd like to hear the answer to that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Vuzza, um, I'm from the Sierra Club. And, uh, we're the largest environmental organization in, uh, the United States. And we are very aware of any environmental concerns around this. And there's, compared to the alternative, there really isn't any. Um, when you're talking about the alternative, right now, the biggest, uh, producer of electricity is coal. Which is highly polluting and highly damaging to the environment. Um, and, uh, as far as, uh. One gentleman talked about, uh, the use of farmland. And right now, anywhere from ten, excuse me, from eight to ten percent of the farmland is used to make ethanol to burn your, uh, gas tanks. If you start, uh, start electrifying everything, cars, houses in the industry and that sort of thing. Only about two to three percent of the farmland will be used for, uh, for solar. Uh, the rest of it, uh, will be able to return back to food production. Um, and I will make a comment that, uh, solar beats the alternative, which is nuclear. Uh, coal and gas on, on just about all, uh, all metrics. It's, uh, it's cheaper, uh, better for the environment, uh, and that sort of thing. I have some, uh. Have some pamphlets that, uh, my organization has prepared, I would like to hand out to you folks if I might. Basically, information, this is all everything that is spoken about. But only misinformation that is presented and that, um, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Um, you know, basically electrification of everything is going to put fossil fuel out of business and they're not going to go down easily. So, uh, you know, you look up things on the internet, first thing that comes up is stuff that's, uh, that's been, uh, supported by fossil fuel. To really get the truth, you have to dig into it. The stuff I gave to you is all from, is from, uh, very reliable sources, a lot of it's from universities or the United States government. So if you have any questions, uh, my, my email is on there also. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I don't see anyone on Zoom either.
My name's John Hardman, fifteen eighty-eight, South Blair Road, I'm a township supervisor for North Star. We as a board are in support of this project, uh, we took a tour a few years ago with some other facilities. Um, I think setbacks are important. You know, aesthetically, I think it's important that we have some decorative fences of some sort. And I think it's really important that we. Stick to a, a tax depreciation table, you know, with the windmills, we had a kind of a curve thrown at us years ago. And I, and I've expressed that to DTE, what my concerns are as a tax assessor and revenue to the township. That if you're promised one thing, you know, and you kind of need to stick to the deal. So that would be my only concern that, you know, a year or two down the road that the depreciation table isn't changed. And, you know, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, for attorneys to fight what we were originally promised. And I just don't want to see that happen again. But again, overall, we're definitely in support of this project. Thanks for the time.
If he's, uh, like that, no?
I'm going to move the.
Oh, you're going to move, okay, he's moving.
Can anybody have a question, and a Rob has a question?
Yeah, I mean, my question seems to be, um, for some of the people in the audience. Right, how many other arms do we have running in the area right now? That, and how long is it running?
How many other solar farms are running in the area? Uh, it, we can talk, BT probably talked of the ones that they, they have.
Me, all are, I mean, how many of these are running, running, Michigan, you know?
Matt Wagner, uh, DT, right now, um, the largest solar park we have operating, um, is LaPierre Solar. Obviously, down in LaPierre, it's about fifty-nine lots.
And then, how long have they been running?
It's been running, I think it was installed, if I'm recalling correctly, I think it was twenty sixteen.
And with that, how many glare complaints do you get at each of these locations? Historically, and I have to tell you how you can come along.
Yeah, we, we, very few, relatively new, we had a couple of residents, David, the park. Um, I really complained, but just after we could help to add some of it in screening, and so we did. Uh, we really didn't get a lot of complaints on where, the ones we did, we were mitigated by installing reservation.
And then just my clarification on glare, I've never, and just for, for, for what? are we talking driving in the sun in the morning, Blair, or are we talking like magnifying glass burning books, still, Blair?
I'm the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that the question about, when we talk about the storm, did you talk about the storm study? Then there was the maximum dot holes in that, for this area, would that be combined? Maximum dot hole through the solar and the wind?
The study did it, I don't know.
So, you know, if you got Ryan here to give you more detail if necessary, that so we studied, your organs talked about family running the solar farm. So that will be modeled originally, and then there was a request that said, okay, notwithstanding that, there's been a question about what happens when we do a different actually from solar farm and needs a big gym project, and what does that, so we submitted a supplemental study that looked at them all. And I know that there were two points that were that were noted during the presentation today, and again, getting more technical, and so we're trying to get my my expertise, but but what we know is for all of those that were, they were over the total limit of fifty. But there's no additional contribution, it was too tight from the invert. So those two receptors, I think this is in fact, we reported, it went was out, that solar contribution of the sector five oh three is twenty-one, that's also very low. The wind contribution is fifty-three and we have combined whole of fifty-three. So it's the only change by the solar project, and then same is true of five oh four, it's twenty-two EA and solar, fifty-one from the wind, combined fifty-one, so so in those two particular areas, when we're highlighting that, and split that were transparent on, and that we need to do with post compliance, that that validates that, and there's any objecting during that, but I just wanted to make sure that that folks understand that that we're not contributing to to make additional sound. Yeah, I was wondering about combining that, but another question, going back to Blair. Can these be regular, be handled, kind of like shadow flicker with the turbines where you can shut it off? Or adjust the pitch of the panels to mitigate the area at a certain time of day? And this is an actual report, we mentioned this, and it's the one difference, I think, between what we're dealing with here, what we're dealing with now, so those are fixed. Tracked to the effect, there's no, there's no movement on that. And so, you know, back with the original technology, you couldn't do that. Now you can, so, you know, what we propose, and I think Spicer agrees with this, there's really, there's several ways that you can, you know, deal with with layer, sometimes you have simply my side issue, there's this vegetation, we're going to have additional vegetation that is going to be a lot of it, it would be harder for planes, obviously, even the president approved, so more vegetation, but then you're right, we can I think it's done by, I don't know if it's individual panels or by cracks, some by cracked panels, but you can program it. So where the modeling, sorry, I'm wrong, the modeling shows that there's going to be glare on a given day for even at power or at minutes. You can, it's going to be backtrack, right, so you can backtrack the panel, though it will not reflect in that direction and will prevent the glare, so I, it is, it is, you can do with the windshield, so it's actually a lot easier for your side. And the only other question I have on that is, the vegetation, you talk about vegetation, you're talking about evergreen vegetation, that stuff that's going to die off in the winter time? I don't know if it speaks, I'm not done with vegetation, because I'm not an expert in that, but I mean, I'm not aware of anything to die off in the winter time. Yeah, I'm experienced. Yeah, I know, I think, remember what the exact answer, but I think both.
I think it's primarily evergreen, I guess, I guess the other thing in one of the requirements is that it's something that we have to replace. So, you know, that's kind of a catchphrase there, but I think our first plan is primarily evergreen. Which ideally, you know, retain their their needles, you know, their their fruit.
And I think if you look at our landscape, and we also, for the first of all, it's not to stay red, and to, I believe, we also, a little bit of more native trees as well to to provide for normal feeling of, and worst occasion of pollution. Thank you. In terms of the location of the inverters, how close are they to the panel and closer to where we are? Yeah, so so the inverters are generally a certain distance away from the panel, they won't catch heat on. And generally, somewhere between forty and fifty feet is the safe number that that's facing. And up edge as well, we don't, we don't have any, any solar or very close to the substation.
Any other questions?
So we'll just go through some of the questions that that public asked. The one question, I think it started off, it said, will will the substation be filled up with this?
Yeah, so, I, so we're, what we'll do is we'll be back at the, on the program, so so if there were any, if any, you know, improvements, the substation would be larger than, I don't think that's the case.
Okay, and then the next question, can you talk about the stormwater study?
Yeah, so the solar panels are considered thirty percent purpose design, so the reason their retention bonds, because what the study showed was that on the management, that is, we did, we did a harness that showed, I think, the first calculations, that actually, and what we provided it that showed that we really didn't think there would be substantial impact on drainage. As a local project, and part of it is the gentleman said about your faith, there's not, there's not going to be foundations under the the pandemic, so this, you know, for, for, but in, in session with the drainage commission, bring, drainage commission asks for the concerns and the purposes of what we're designing in terms of our drainage and our drainage. They are assuming that thirty percent for improvement, so, so it's conservative and we're for sure to be doing that, and so that is the process that we wanted to be designing, so we think it's very conservative approach that's going to ensure you know, protection in terms of storm. Yes, additionally, we're taking, you know, great care to be maintaining the great tiles right there, just so that, that we're understanding where they're at, we're going to survey the line, and then we're in mitigation efforts to make sure that we don't, when the impact and repairs, so it's actually
Okay, operations, there is a concern that it was not working at night, but there would be repairs at night.
It's unlikely, unless there was a strong guy in the emergency, if not, the crew will operate during the day, you know, if there's a broken account for some reason, you're going to run less.
There were a couple of questions on Blair, we kind of talked about Blair a little bit from the commission. Homes of the receptors, you know, we had the list of the receptors with the Blair, and the study was done. The study was done with the idea that there was no terrain taken into consideration, there was no vegetation taken into consideration, there was just it was just great, so I guess the question is, in reference to the the ones that did come up that indicated that there was, Blair, can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, you know, system back along there on top. You know, I think, yeah, I can tell you that this sort of modeling is very conservative, so this is what I think we call, which is an error. Is that correct? And for a lot of reasons, maybe same, you know, with that, you know, shadow worker, when we're doing the end projects. So it's very conservative, doesn't consider, you know, possible client site issues that are mitigating or maybe think you know, things like that, again, I think, you know, multiple stages of mitigation that may be pointed out, I think, that Spicer pointed out. So we can, we can address, we feel comfortable saying that we can address layer issues, so we're not going to stand here, that there might not, that there's not going to be any layer because our study says there might be. And so we want to ensure that, question is, can you do something about it, and the answer is yes, and we believe that we propose that in the condition that Spicer, as he proposes, will be.
There was a question on who could take care of the rest of the land, there's understanding that, you know, the setbacks are generous and that the fields are bad, but who was going to take care of the additional land, there was concern that we'd go follow and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so, so the owners themselves will take care of the outside of the, the screening around that. In some cases, not, an impaired person would not be utilized, so we made sure there would be a bit of availability for the farmers to get at those fields and those areas to make sure that they would our, our arms are, you know, they're going to farm every additional inch that they can. And in some cases, definitely to farm the, if it's possible, farm it between the distance of the fence and, you know, the screening and the road right away. There's already a lot of discussion about what it can use that space for to maximize, you know, hundreds of people.
Because I think it's probably worth noting that the way that we design the fence is so that we don't end up in corners and areas where farm equipment or maintenance, so it can't fit.
There's a conversation about local jobs, of what this would bring, local jobs, do you have a projection on that? What kind of local jobs would bring to the community?
Yeah, I think we're projecting this, or you can, a hundred or two hundred folks in the job site. Depending on the, the pace of construction, kind of your big place.
And then there was a question about material, what materials will we purchase within the county for the project?
That's a good question, so we think you do get a very broad network, a lot of local material. Michigan mainly, definitely, we're not going to buy solar panels in Grasham County. But our, our hopes, we're going to every hardware store close by, you know, consistently, and that comes at all the local hardware is on supply outlets, electrical wholesalers, and just, you know, those different areas. Not the major mature, like solar panels and steel and converters. Anything that you can get, you can get locally, make a strike for that. BP requires that as well.
Okay. There was a question on the proposed life of the project.
Thirty years.
Thirty? We talked about other other ones in the area. And we talked about PA one sixteen, have they been considered?
There is no PA one sixteen, the purpose is, we're starting now.
I said it again.
There is no PA one sixteen brought, that's probably a good product.
Okay.
Is being worse.
But there is a process to defer participation in PA one one six, or that the landowner wants to be in, be in a solar project. But they don't want to lose their tax, they can defer it while the solar project is in operation, when it's done.
Yeah, and Guard has said eventually that, that they wouldn't save their panels on, on, it, and those are the things that isn't it, I don't think right now with PA one sixteen?
Isn't it, isn't it exactly right now, in PA one one sixteen, PA one one six, yes. And there's just a process to make sure that all the capable workers complete that, and our on the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development.
I don't think, or storage, is it? So sort of, after store, students generate and the real science, the natural laws that has to be where it goes into that.
There is no plans for this project or storage, so I don't have the answer because we're, you know.
But that could answer, there's not a side department, so.
Where's, where's all the electric going to go to?
So the electric will go out on the grid and go to the, it follows the path that reaches this, it's just going to go where it's taken first and most, and that's, that's how it's going to travel.
So then the, one of our last questions, Chair, was revenue. About the revenue of the project and how does, how does North Star in the county receive revenue from the project?
I'm just waiting a little bit to finish, let me back through those. Pretty, it's a little different, I'm referring to close, the next standard, but we could add, well, that's something to consider. Values are a little bit different than starting points, I, emigration goes down a little bit farther for fifteen years and then then it levels out at that, we need proportion. We get the track of the student, yeah. But it's, it is about.
Okay.
Do we know the rate of depreciation?
In the tax state, yeah, where it starts, we're going to amortize it down to twenty-three percent after fifteen years and then levels out. It's kind of, when you're coming to.
I think there's other questions here. Thank you. All right, last opportunity to see, wishing you have any other questions? We're heading close to public hearing at six twenty-five. All right, and Kyle has prepared a resolution here for us.
I have, and so this resolution before you incorporates the recommendations in Spicer's report, I think as a process, I'll summarize high points of the resolution. You can stop me to slow down, and then one thing to keep in mind is, this is your decision, although I've incorporated recommendations from Spicer's report, you can always make changes to the proposed resolution, but then tend to this is the work from Spicer's report and then build those into the decision proposed, yes?
It's the one that says, I mean, like, I don't.
What? Yeah. Okay, yeah. So, the first page is what you call essentially recitals, and I won't read this for pay them, unless you want me to. But the first paragraph with a whereas clause, it says, BT submitted a application essentially for a solar farm. And the solar farm is, proposed solar farm is located in North Star Township. Going to the second very large paragraph, as you guys know, the application materials for this were quite extensive, so this lists everything that was submitted by DT essentially with respect to this project, so the initial application, all the appendixes, the glare study, the drainage study and so forth, that's your second paragraph. Going on the page two, it then talks about how the county retained professional planners as well as legal counsel to assist them with this process. Spicer and us. Next paragraph, Spicer reviewed the application for consistency with your zoning ordinance. They initially prepared a memorandum with respect to the application and gave that to the applicant to request additional submissions in February. And then afterwards, after reviewing supplemental information, prepare a report for all of you that you went over today. Then next, it talks about how the planning commission held a public hearing and heard public comment. Next paragraph, it talks about how after hearing, recommendations from consultants to public hearing that the planning commission would find the proposed project to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, subject to conditions, so for its special land use permit aspect and the site plan. This resolution, just so all you're aware, there was the comment made about the proposed lay down yard, this would not include the lay down yard, that request, like, we has to come to you at a separate time, because you need your planners to review the plans for the lay down yard, and you don't, you didn't have any application material related to the lay down yard, so this would be everything exclusive of, of a lay down yard. So the next step is under, on page two, we get to, this is now therefore be a result. You have to make a number of findings for special land use permits and site plans, and these are pretty lengthy, I'll try to make it as concise as possible, but this is your special land use finding, so you have to talk about the, the, basically is the project harmonious with the surrounding area, there's some proposed findings in here that talk about how there's going to be screening, that it would allow far agricultural there's going to be screening, that it would allow far agricultural activities to occur, uh, at adjacent properties. And, um, it also talks about how M DART has had a policy position that it believes that, uh, solar is compatible with preservation of farmland, even though I understand that there is no PA 116 land, uh, being used for this project. Next paragraph is, would not change the central character of the surrounding area, similar kind of findings. It talks about being, uh, co- co-located with a, an existing, uh, renewable energy land use, the, the wind turbines, uh, the farming, the screening, uh, it will be decommissioned at, at one point uh, after its lifespan to return the land to what it was before. Next, there's a, a, a very lengthy requirement to go through whether the, uh, potential hazards of a project. So that's sixteen point eight, point sixteen point three eight three of your ordinance. And it talks about potential hazards or what most people will call potential nuisances of a project like this. So noise, requirements of a noise, uh, sound study, glare, we talked about some mitigation techniques and you will see in the proposed conditions of this resolution, recommendations that Spicer has made and then that I have tried to put in a format into the resolution, understanding that, uh, that you can, uh, can certainly comment on those. Uh, talks about that there's continuing escrow that allow the county to have funds to investigate if there are complaints related to ordinance violations or some of this stuff. And then, um, there is a requirement in the resolution for compliance with all local, state, federal laws. So environmental permits, for example, ensure that, that that's compliant with. Page four, demands on public services and facilities, a renewable energy project. So typically you would apply the standard to, let's say you were, you had a big housing development or something and maybe there needed to be water sewer, for example. In, in this case, you know, this is a, a, a land use that doesn't need most traditional public services and facilities. One thing that I will mention though is there is requirements in here related to public drainage, impacts on county drains, and then also, um, there is a condition related to emerg, the ability for emergency service providers to provide access and service to this, uh, this project, which I'll explain. Site plan findings, very similar to your special land use permit findings, although, uh, there, some of them are different. So orderly development improvements, again, this is kind of consistency of the land use with the neighboring area. So we talked about screening, um, talked about the fencing and talked about decommissioning and, and potential, the, the potential for continuation of agricultural uses nearby the project. Uh, vehicular and pedestrian circulation, also known as roads, uh, I think to most people. This talks about, um, this finding is, is supported that there's adequate vehicular and pedestrian circulation by, there's a requirement for a road use agreement with the, um, road commission, essentially, among other things. Going to page five, access to existing streets. Typically, there, this, this isn't really, this, this, uh, finding doesn't necessarily apply, uh, too tight to this project. It, it does mention that the project will use access roads. Um, landscape preservation, talk about preserving the landscape. This again talks about the vegetative buffer, talks about the fence, talks about decommissioning. So at, you know, the landscape would be eventually returned after, uh, the project's lifespan. Stormwater and erosion, fourteen point five A five. Talks about the management of stormwater through approvals of the drain commissioner. It also talks about how the application included a forty-seven page drainage memorandum. So, uh, findings that there, there, any stormwater impacts would be, they're managed through these kinds of studies and, and approvals. Emergency vehicles findings, the improvements would be arranged for emergency vehicles. There's a, there's a requirement for emergency provider plan. And then, um, which we'll talk about, uh, that ensures that, that access would, would be there. Loading and storage areas as permanent improvements for this project typically do not require loading and storage. And when we talk about lay down yard, which would come to you later, I, I understand that there, there may be a temporary, uh, storage area in the lay down yard because that's essentially what the, the purpose of the uh, project improvement is, but right now, this, this, as, as you're considering it, there's not really loading and storage areas. Exterior lighting, again, it's not indicate use of exterior, permanent exterior lighting on most of the improvements. There was mentioned a substation. Substation technically falls under the essential services provision of your zoning ordinance, which essentially says for kind of public utility type infrastructure, transmission lines and so forth. There generally isn't zoning review, although I, that, you know, I think Spicer has made the recommendation, I think this is a good idea. If you want to, to find out what kind of lighting is used, uh, sure, if you ask the applicant, they would let you know for the substation. Um, off street parking, again, this is a project that doesn't really have off street parking. And then setbacks, so the site plan meets the setback subject to the conditions in the resolution. So on page six, this is the most, probably the most important part of the resolution. These are the conditions that Spicer has talked about, and then I have kind of interpreted to put in a legal document. Many of which I think address the concerns that some of the public has, has made today. And, uh, and so play, you know, pay close attention if, if there's something that, that you need to, to be interpreted to you, uh, just let, just let me know. First is application consistency. So this says you're only approving what is depicted in the application, not anything more. If they want more like a lay down yard, they have to come to you, or there's certain processes if it's minor improvements to go to Spicer. Final drawings, the applicant went after the, you know, prior to project construction, the final drawings would need, would need to be provided to essentially, uh, Spicer detailing the final model, so, uh, solar panels and so forth. Page seven, transportation plan and access drives. This is, um, to ensure essentially that, that especially I think for the, the township, that roads, any road impacts are, um, repaired more or less. So there's a requirement to get a, to have a transportation plan with the road commission, post some sort of financial guarantee for repairs to road. And then there's a, a general, uh, condition. Okay. I thought something was wrong.
No, didn't you?
Um, then there's a general commission or condition, uh, regarding, um, so it says at the very end, all material damage to public road are located in the county resulting from the project construction, maintenance or operation must be repaired by the applicant. So that, that tries to ensure the, the roads are, are fixed based on da, damage, uh, potential damage from the project. Um, permits, reports, unanticipated discoveries, plan to compliance. This essentially says that they need to follow all local, state and federal laws, including there's, uh, provisions for, you know, if you find kind of cultural resources, which is unanticipated discoveries plan. But basically, uh, construction codes and anything that would apply to them that generally is out, maybe outside the scope of zoning, you know, for example, if they impact wetlands, that would go to Eagle, not necessarily, you know, Grash County. So they would have to follow through with that. They'd have to provide copies of the permits when they get them to, um, essentially if there's a, a data, uh, room set up for that, that would be on file. Manufacturers installation instructions and construction code compliance. This is, um, a condition from your zoning ordinance essentially that says there's a process that they need to make the installation instructions for the project and then safety components for the project available to the county. However, um, sometimes some of this information is of a confidential nature. So if it is of a confidential nature, then the county would come up with a mutually agreeable plan with the applicant, how you would have access to the information, but it may not necessarily be um, always, you know, in paper file. That's, um, that, you know, in some, some cases you, you have that with these types of projects. Going on to page eight, complaint resolution, uh, Spicer has mentioned this very well. This is essentially verbatim, your complaint resolution process for the, the Heartland Wind, uh, resolution that you passed last year. So it's a very similar process. Someone would make a complaint, the applicant would acknowledge complaint by business days and would resolve it in thirty days or less, unless, um, it's impossible to basically do that. And then there would be reporting to the, to your, probably your county staff of, okay, this is the complaint, this was the resolution or, or the complaint was determined not to be verified. So the county has a check to ensure that complaints are getting, uh, looked at and resolved adequately. G on page eight, this is probably the most important condition in the resolution is decommissioning. Similar for your wind projects, it would require a decommissioning agreement that would be acceptable to your county board of commissioners that outlines how and when the project would be de- decommissioned. Uh, it would be related to decommissioning plan from the applicant as well as, uh, you know, subject to, to my review, our office's review, potentially Spicer's review. Um, and that it would not take into account salvage value. They would post a financial security, likely a surety bond to be on file with the, with the county. In the, in the event that the applicant decided, I am not going to decommission my project, that you would have money to do so. Uh, pursuant to the terms of the agreement. So the, it would avoid the situation where you have, you know, it's thirty years from now and you have a hunk of metal that's not doing anything out there and nobody's taking it away. It will be taken away and, um, and that's, uh, what this commission is, or condition is attempting to do. Fencing, just, this is, uh, this condition's minor, it talks about, you know, clarifying in the site plans, uh, what the, what the fencing will look like, as that was mentioned in the report. Uh, noise emission, again, there would be a requirement for, there's the modeled noise, the sound in the, in the application, and then to prove that, to prove it meets ordinance requirements, a requirement for after construction, they would test the actual noise generated from the project to make sure that it meets the standards. Um, if not to make, then they would have to make changes to, uh, the project or to their, to their, uh, improvements. Jay glare, like, this is something that's been brought up a number of times. So prior to construction, it would require the applicant to submit a plan acceptable to the county for further mitigation in certain areas. So there is instances in the, uh, and this is in the long form Spicer report of, um, glare in areas where there, you know, the study did not take into account the fence and the vegetation, but these are areas where there may be less kind of uh, visual obstruction from those types of things. So it would require DT to submit an additional plan that would talk about either proposed operational controls, like they mentioned with the trackers, um, utilizing more screening such as twice the landscaping buffer or using a fencing material that is not, you know, let's say chain link, but it's, it's opaque. The last part of this res, part of this condition is, uh, it would give the county the ability, if it would choose to, to require post-construction glare analysis. My, the way that this resolution is designed to handle and glare is probably the biggest issue, uh, that are most common concern that I've heard today. Uh, with that particular concern, to ensure that the project is sustainable with its residents is a multi-layered approach. It's this focusing or adding conditions, extra requirements on these key areas, having a complaint resolution process that reports get uh, reported to the, uh, the county to ensure that there are actions being taken, that complaints being rectified. And then last, which will, will kind of, I'll just skip to that condition, but, um, there's a, what is called a continuing ordinance enforcement escrow, which means the applicant has to put money in, into an account that the county can use if complaint resolution doesn't work, if everything else doesn't work, where the county can investigate complaints essentially on its own and hire its own people and then make determinations whether the ordinance is being adhered to or not. The final step, and hopefully it never gets there, is anytime someone violates a condition of this resolution or the zoning ordinance, it violates essentially the law. So you could go to court and, and resolve those issues. Hopefully that doesn't happen. There's, there's many approaches, many layers to try to get voluntary compliance with that, with the applicant and, um, and, and typically this has been a pretty successful process. So next, uh, conditioned landscaping plant plan, basically clarify the landscaping plan. We talked about, they talked about that in the report. Insurance requirements, to ensure that they have the insurance requirements for the life of the project. Uh, page ten, site plan, standard compliance, Spicer talked about how there were, I, I don't know if the word is, is ticky tack, but some, some items of the, um, zoning ordinance that require, requirements for site plans, they're probably designed for projects that are not, that don't take up this much land area, similar to kind of your wind project. So one of them is a scale of one, one inch equals a hundred feet. What this does is it tries to meet those requirements. It, it, it doesn't necessarily actually waive the requirements. It tries to get DT to meet the requirements by giving them kind of specific instructions. So submitting site plans that use the scale or their electronic form where you can demonstrate that the scale, you know, the, by zooming in and out, can, you can get to that scale. And then two, confirming in writing that there's no sanitary sewers or storm sewers that exist in the project area, or if there are, uh, which I would probably assume they're not, to provide their location, and then providing the locations of project signage. It tries to clear up, to make sure that, yes, you did go through all your requirements in your zoning ordinance related to the site plan, but understanding that there needs to be some practical, um, uh, realization to that. Requirement submit as built, continuing enforcement escrow, which I just talked about, uh, project lighting down on page, last page ten. Till the project's decommissioned, any project lighting needs to be, uh, directed away, although I understand that there's not really any project lighting, uh, but that, that's, that's in there. Uh, page eleven, project experience and good repair, people talked about uh, what happens if there, you know, they talked about repairs of the project, but also this is related to ensuring that all project components, especially like the landscaping and the fencing are repaired and they are not unsightly. You know, this is a thirty-year project. We want to make sure that you don't have, you know, fences with gigantic holes in them and it looks, looks terrible. That this requires that everything needs to be neatly cleaned, kept, uh, with, with, uh, with the project, including actually, I think it, so it talks about fencing and dan, and, uh, and dead landscaping, so fixing landscaping. Emergency response plan, I talked about this. Requirement on the project to provide a copy of, to the county of emergency response plan that is provided to low, local, uh, fire service departments, first responders, instructions how to respond to an emergency of the project. And then the interesting thing, and this is kind of new that I put, I put into one of these conditions is if there are responses from those, uh, entities to the applicant, the applicant needs to share what their response, what the comments are with the county. So the county understands, you know, if, if they're, what, what, what the, if there are any concerns about it. And then what kind of responses the applicant has to those concerns. And then this last section eleven is kind of, it spells out the logistics of how all of this works. So applicant means DT or anybody else who owns or operates the project. The project can be transferred, but they have to give the county essentially notice sixty days before the transfer because it's suspected. How to determine all these conditions are met. It essentially says Spicer or your zoning administrator can write and determine compliance with the conditions. Page twelve, if there are minor project amendments, so this is a huge project. So let's say they move some panels inside of that, so they move the fences a little bit. You, I would guess you probably don't want all those requests to come to a meeting like this and, and you go through all those requests. So it gives some discretion to your professional staff as well as Spicer to handle those requests. And if they view that they are too significant of a request where it changes kind of the composition of the project that you just, you know, looked at and approved, then they could take them to you, but it gives discretion for them to approve kind of, uh, requests that do not create additional project impact. So if they don't, if it does not create additional glare, additional noise, they can, they can approve it administratively. Uh, E, from your zoning ordinance, you can, you have the ability to inspect the project whenever you want. You have to get by business days notice. And that is essentially it. Last, last but not least, it talks about violations of the resolution or violations of your ordinance, and they can be, um, addressed by, in, in court essentially. Any questions? I know that was a lot. You had the, I have the, I have the, uh, opportunity of, of going through this entire resolution after the, you go through the entire report. You're already kind of.
All right.
I think this is the, uh, for the emergency service or, or the chief of stock plan. Uh, it doesn't mention use of like any, but are there any unique fire fire requirements, reverberant and et cetera, like, uh, fire fire people learning? You know, shut off, what have you, that we need to fill them. Yeah, so there will be a time that there's a, 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 presented as the local responders and how to shut that out. Our requirements are, we pull up the site, you need to be able to build where you're going, where is the main shut off, how to achieve that. And that is all part of what we. It'd be as part of our supplement, it's a, it's a, some of these things are asked for, so we've provided some additional information, including a power line that will give, um, to our personal responders, actually interactive and.
Resolution includes some of these things that Spicer was recommending on the end.
This includes all of that. Yep. That's how I, that's how I kind of draft. I drafted the resolution from the report. And then there are some additional kind of, you know, administrative kind of legal things, but yes. The answer to that question is yes.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, we'll entertain a motion. I'm going to entertain a motion to proof the resolution as presented. A motion by Janelle, supported by D, that, uh, we improve the resolution. And I'll start with a roll call, so we'll start with Rob.
Yes.
Marla, yes. Janelle?
Yes.
And Danny?
Yes.
Oh my word, I'm sorry, David. Oh my word, I'm sorry, David?
Yes.
Wow, sorry about that. All right, motion passes. I'm ready. Any other comments or concerns in your business? E?
My stars weren't paid up. So, um, getting this very busy. From marketing that, two billion applications, but not really on summer, but then that's. When this talk is going to be leaving this year.
But it's good ones. Me, anything else before we wrap it up? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. What, what, motion by Dave, supported by Janelle that we adjourn, all in favor?
I am.
Close the scene. Motion carried.